So, why don't we go ahead and call our meeting to order? Just a way of explanation as we get started tonight. Our city clerk is out of state tonight, so Lori is gonna have to do dual duty between setting up the cameras and the broadcast activity. And then she'll run in here, and she'll act as our city clerk.
Okay.
There she is.
He's coming.
There she is.
There's our hero. Our shero.
I was explaining your multiple duties tonight.
Because you're a woman.
So, if we could all rise for a moment of silence, please, and then we'll ask Mr. Showalter to lead us in the pledge to flag. A moment of silence? Now for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the robe?
Yes. Ms. Singer-Arlene? Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Tingle-Sands?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and Arlene heard from Ms. Early earlier today, and she is under the weather. And we appreciate everybody staying home that's under the weather.
Yes.
Also, our chief administrative officer is also under the weather, and was gonna try and make an effort to come back to the council meeting, and I suggested he not do so.
We appreciate that.
For all of our benefit. So, we'll just, we'll get through the night best we can, but we do have those limitations. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, if you'd like to look those over for any corrections or additions.
Most of them for approval, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second, Mayor.
May I second it? If there are no additions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Each of you should have received a copy of the latest check register that we sent out. If you could indicate if you've received that? Thank you. And then we'll go into public comments as the first item on our agenda, and we have Ms. Candace Whitehouse.
First up. Hello, everybody. I have some stuff. You wanna take one down? Not a great song probably to sing. Okay. If you don't know me, which I think I know everybody, but my name's Candace Whitehouse. I haven't been in front of the new city council members yet, so just wanted to introduce myself. But I'm the executive director of Elizabeth Village. If you don't know who we are, we are a nonprofit in Scott County that serve women and children who are facing homelessness, poverty, and now we are serving domestic violence as well. Our office is two-second walk that way. So, if you don't know where we are, you walk down Court Street, there's a bright purple door. That is us. Can't miss us. And you can come by anytime. We'd love to have you. We have lots of different programs here in the community. Our longest-standing program, as you all probably know, is our Transitional Home down on College Street. It's now been operating for over seven years, serving literal homelessness. Again, women and children, that's our focus. About a year and a half ago, we started our homelessness prevention program that is run out of our Court Street office, working with women and children who are at risk of becoming homeless, trying to prevent that from happening to households, kind of trying to work our Transitional Home out of a job, in a way. We're constantly full at our house, and so if we can prevent someone from needing that resource, we want to do that. It's more cost-effective and all that. And so, we've had a lot of success with that program. We've prevented over 50 households from becoming homeless in Scott County, so we're very proud of that, and we'll continue to do that work. And as the word gets out more and more, we're getting more calls for that. So, very glad to have that program offered here in the community. Our newest program, the Domestic Violence Victims Advocacy Program, just started in February, but that is started through our federal grant, VOWA, the Violence Against Women's Act. We're very excited about our first federal grant. It's a big accomplishment for us, but that allowed us to hire an advocate to do work similar to our homelessness prevention program, but focused on women who are experiencing, women and children who are experiencing abuse in their homes. And so, if they are experiencing that, they can come. Our advocate can help them maneuver in the courtroom, can help with EPOs, anything that they need in the realm to try and escape from that relationship, but then also help with housing if they're at risk of losing their housing. They can do similar to our outreach program. So, we're excited about that. We've gotten lots of calls that we've had to refer out, and so now we can accept those calls. And then that is a baby step into the bigger goal of opening even more resources for women and children experiencing domestic violence in Scott County. As many of you will probably know, we are looking at opening a shelter in the community to actually be able to provide housing for women who do not have anywhere else to go. That is not a resource we have here in Scott County. We have lots of data on why we need that, and that's a part of our feasibility study that we have handed to the city council members that were, have been here. But if you're new and would like a copy of that, I'm happy to email or bring a printed copy by, so you could read that. It's very long, but got lots of great information about the issues here in Scott County. So, we're working towards that shelter in the future. Other than our programs, we also are always looking for ways to serve the community. We had our second year hosting the K-Count, and so counting, doing a point-in-time count of homeless individuals in our community, which gets reported to the state, which helps with funding and just the state knowing what the issues are in Scott County. Before, we took that, Scott County was reporting, defaulting, reporting zero, so now we are reporting, which is very helpful, and hopefully can funnel some more funding towards us in the future. We are also trying to make efforts to help with the census this year. Our office is open to individuals to come in and complete those. It's a big push from Kentucky Nonprofit Network for nonprofits to help with finding populations that are typically hard to reach with things like the census, to make sure we're getting accurate count of our community. So, we are trying to do what we can with that and helping document individuals here and the needs that we have. So, we are always trying to find ways to even walk outside of our programming and help with Scott County and do whatever we can to fill in the gaps in the needs. If you are new on the city council, or if maybe we haven't chatted in a while, feel free. I always am up to have coffee, is my thing, but if you want tea, that's also fun. But you can come down to our office. I'm pretty much there. Or we can schedule a time for you to go tour the home if you've not been in there. I would encourage you to do that. That's very eye-opening. You can come by and see it. And then we can talk more about what we do, because this was just a little nutshell. Yeah. And so, then I passed out a request for funding. You all have had us in your budget for three years now, so we appreciate being in there for a fourth year. And as we do more and more work here in the community, trying to make it a better place, we appreciate you all financially supporting us. But then I know you all also support us in other ways throughout the year, and I'm very appreciative of that as well. So, anybody have any questions?
We had invited Candace to come for the council periodically and give council an update based on the funding that we provide and the good work that they've done. I appreciate the fact that you brought your funding request with a report for the council.
Yeah.
So, keep up the good work.
Thank you. And call me.
All right. Thank you, Candace. Next on the list for public comment is William Barnes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry, I'm not formal. I just got off work about 10 minutes before we got here.
You're good.
We're here today on account of the livestock ordinance, or the city ordinance on a kind of livestock. We have a 27-pound, it's a micro Juliana pig, and code enforcement served us with a citation a few weeks ago. I've spoke to every one of you. I kinda lobbied everybody and exhausted every, you know, try to keep her pet. What we're here today is to maybe request like a weight limit, you know, an amendment with a weight limit to the actual livestock clause. You know, maybe 50 pounds or under, being that she's 27 pounds, she's a micro pig. I'm a excavation contractor, self-employed. She's a physical fitness and lifestyle coach, so you know, it's, we live over here in Kane Wood. We're completely, you know, we're not off-the-grid, you know, unconventional-type people at all, you know. But pigs actually make, they make really good pets, and I can understand how a mini pig is just considered anything, you know, below 200 pounds. And there's actually what's called a micro pig, and they can get up to be about 50 pounds. Ours is 27 pounds, and we've had her for about two years now. We just moved in over here to Kane Wood. We originally lived in Stampin' Ground, and we had her as a pet before we moved here. And while I can see, you know, if you had a full-blown, you know, sheer definition, she is a pig, it's hard to believe that, you know, a 27-pound pig would make it in any type of livestock, you know, operation. So, and I've talked to every one of you guys. I think I got a fighting chance, you know, if we could, I'm not sure the formalities of it or whatever, but to get some type of a vote to make an amendment such as, you know, 50 pounds or less would be considered some type of domestic pet.
I do have two. I've got pictures of her. She's actually, she's in the car. She's small enough to hold. But yeah, I mean, we have a video of our yard, but he left it at the house, of course.
Our yard is completely, no nuisance at all. She's potty-trained. She stays inside. No nuisance at all.
Yeah. So, I guess we're just kinda requesting like a, I guess, some additional wordage to the livestock clause, just because she is, she's exactly like a dog. She goes outside to use the bathroom. She comes back inside. She plays ball. She cuddles on the couch. She's, she doesn't, she doesn't stink. She doesn't bark. She doesn't make any noise. Our neighbors on both sides love her, so I don't think she's necessarily causing a nuisance. I could totally understand the 300-pound pig in the backyard. Absolutely not. I've had those too. But I guess that's kind of what, what we are requesting, or if you guys would be willing to like look at the pictures of her to kinda see what we're, what we're dealing with here. She's definitely a.
Mayor, I think we probably need to go through and just read that ordinance and see exactly what it says. I knew, I do know when we put that ordinance in, we were having issues with large pigs in the backyard over at.
Chickens.
Chickens, and yeah, livestock and that. So, I just told him, I said, I didn't know whether the council would do anything with her or not, but he called me. I said, I told you to come down and bring four to the council.
You did.
Because I wouldn't wanna say yea or nay on a, this is a body of eight people that makes.
Correct.
Yes.
Devin, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have a thought or opinion on this from your legal perspective for us?
I mean, you can legally include any, any kind of language you want, really, but I mean, from the policy argument is the one that takes the cake here. I mean, I can't say, I could bring whatever council wants, what kind of an ordinance you all want. I know, I wasn't here when this, this got amended. I think it was seven years ago, maybe?
Right.
I think it was 2013. And I know that the issue was chickens and then, and then some pigs too at that time. So, I mean, it's, it's up to the council to determine whether, you know, you know, you all obviously have a pet and you have a unique situation, but you know, it can't be a case-by-case. So, you either have to wanna allow livestock, maybe with some different restrictions, or you don't wanna allow them at all. So, there, there's some flexibility in there. I think the weight limit would be tough if it was a blanket weight limit, because chickens and those different kinds of animals, which maybe are a different nuisance.
Can you not, can you not just name pigs in particular? Because pigs are, like they're describing, pigs are such a domestic, domestic animal that you, they're just like dogs. They're better behaved than dogs a lot of times. And we could just name, so that you don't get back into the chicken part of it, and we just name?
Yeah, you could, you could.
A pig?
You could name them instead of weight limit. I mean, I think the weight limit does make sense in a lot of ways for a pig, for example, but yeah, you, I mean, there's.
The state ordinance does that, right?
No discrimination to worry about here. There, you know, you can include specific language like that.
Does a state ordinance name pigs and have a weight limit?
I didn't find that.
You didn't find that?
I apologize. I told you that. It's actually a Louisville amendment. I'm sorry. I was looking, I had so many tabs open when I was looking through all that, I made that mistake.
And when it, the one in Louisville says pigs under 50 pounds are domestic.
Yeah, well, it says 45.
45 are considered domestic.
How old is your, your pig right now?
She's two years old.
And how big do you think she will get?
She's about as big. She hasn't gained any weight in probably the last four or five months.
Well, the problem we had before, which I understand why we had the problem, because it was a, it wasn't a household pig. It was a sow, basically, is what it was. It needed to be a farm, a farm animal. So, but, and I know there's several other people in town that have pigs in their house. It just hasn't been caught with the pigs yet. So, they don't have to be kept outside. They can be kept inside like a dog, most dogs are these days. So, I mean, I'm more than game to look at it. I was the last time, actually, when it came up, to look at it and put the weight limit, just mention pigs, not, not chickens. Don't go back to, oh, chickens.
Not specifically say livestock, specifically say.
Pig.
Micro pigs.
Domesticated pig.
Under domesticated micro pigs.
For all of you unfamiliar with, with pigs, I know it may sound a little goofy to have a pig as a pet, but I promise you, they're incredibly intelligent animals.
We have a pit bull as well. They play, like, it's just like having like a Shih Tzu or something. She's about the size of a Shih Tzu, so, you know.
I think the, putting the weight on it is a little bit hard, because what if the next pig is 55 pounds and is a household pig? But at least it, it puts it in the parameters of saying, we don't want it to be a.
Right.
Sow again, but it can't be something like that, so.
And I guess the re, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I wasn't, I wasn't in city government at the time the ordinance was passed, but I know that it consumed a lot of the council's time, and the discussion consumed a lot of the council's time. People brought their pigs into council chambers in baby strollers.
Yeah.
We debated that and decided to be respectful.
She's in the car, at least. I was like, if they wanna see her, we can bring her, and if not, we'll leave her in the car.
So, I just, for new council members, I want, I'm gonna listen to what the council wants to do here. This is purely a council decision. The council members who lived through that discussion will recall rooms full of neighbors angry about livestock. Tonight, we're hearing from someone who's affectionate for that animal. I just, I wasn't here, but I watched what the council went through previously, so you all tell me what you wanna do. Is there any chance at all that you could send us out the ordinance for us to look at?
Absolutely.
And not make a decision tonight and think this through?
Yeah, it's very simple language.
It was tough.
It was, it was a tough.
But we were dealing with 250, 300-pound.
Yes.
Sows in the backyard with a place from law.
A pen.
A pen.
Not a house pet.
No.
Right. That's kinda where this came up, was, was raining one day last week, and someone had called Animal Control on us, saying that she was outside with no protection from the weather.
Oh.
And it was because she goes outside to pee, just like our dog does, but she likes being outside. She likes, you know, she's, she's a pig. She likes being outside. And so, she was outside. We have a really tall deck, so she gets under there if it's raining or whatever. And when Animal Control came out, they were like, well, can we see her? I was like, yeah. So, brought her in, and they were like, oh, wow. Like, yeah, she's obviously an inside pet. She has long gray hair. She doesn't look like a sow. She has long gray hair. It's about this long. She looks really fuzzy. I could pick her up. He was like, that says a lot. He was like, normally when we are, you know, doing pig calls, it's a big pig tearing up the yard. Neighbors are complaining. They stink. He was like, this is obviously a different situation. He was like, and we don't wanna tell you, you have to get rid of them, but we're just doing our job, like city ordinance.
Do you have a deadline, did they give you a deadline to do something? This Friday?
And I'll speak with them if the council's gonna be.
We can get that extended, okay.
And I know Ms. Early, she was an advocate. She was like one of the most outspoken advocates at all, and I talked to, and you know, for her to be here, I think, would be pretty crucial, too.
We appreciate the extension on that, though.
We couldn't consider an amendment tonight anyways, so she, she would be able to speak her opinion as well.
I think we just tell Whitton, then we'll.
I'll let Animal Control know that council's discussing, and they won't take any more action until then.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank, we appreciate that.
Well, could you just send your pictures maybe to, to the mayor's office, and then he can send them out to us?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list for public comment is Stephen Price.
Mayor Prather and the town council, coming to you tonight to show you the current news graphic. Mike, where'd he go? Scotten work. He was just here. I don't know where he went, but the current, see, this is Thursday, Tuesday's last news graphic. Mayor Prather, you're talking about sticker shock, which I assume means rising taxes, correct? Possibly?
Talking about the cost to address the shortcomings that we've discovered.
I'm sorry, could you speak up?
The cost to address the shortcomings that we've uncovered.
Right, right. Yeah, exactly. And the two major ones in this, according to this article, are public safety and stormwater management. Is that correct?
Certainly, public safety is, stormwater is one of our concerns.
Right. Well, if you noticed on a piece of paper when I signed up here tonight to speak, it asked me to state my, what I would talk about. Here's what I wrote: textiles, stormwater, arable land, and motor traffic noise. And you might say, well, what in the world would all of those different topics have to do with each other? And I'll try to relate it not only to these four items, but to the last time we were here, I mentioned that I had run into a man from New York State who came here to take hemp fiber and make it into cloth textile work. And I run into him occasionally at the library, and the other day, he handed me this, History of Toyota Corporation. And I'll ask anyone, does anyone here in this room know how Toyota began? Does anyone know the history of?
Most of us know that it was a loom works.
It was what?
Steve, it was a loom works company.
Exactly.
But if you would go ahead and make your point.
Exactly.
Rather than ask us a history lesson, make your point, please.
The point is Toyota started out in the textile business.
Yes.
And, and we have now probably a nascent textile industry. We'll have the fiber, we'll have the materials for, no doubt, we're gonna have the materials for, for a textile industry here in Scott County because of hemp. And I intend, if I have to, write a letter to Susan Elkington or to Toyota and make the same suggestion to them that I made to you two weeks ago. But frankly, I don't think it's my, I mean, I'm willing to do it, but it seems to me that, that you all, being in leadership, should, if you have an interest, that you should write the letter. And that's the point, the reason I'm here in regard to this, this news, news article that Scotten wrote. Arable land, anybody knows that if you pave the earth, that causes stormwater runoff? Does anybody disagree with that? So, if we don't pave land, if all the land in Georgetown were meant to remain arable, that is not unpaved as it is today, then I would assume, and maybe I'm, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if no more land is paved in Georgetown, that stormwater should, should be, should be no more increase in stormwater runoff, because the arable land will absorb rainwater and snow water, so that it doesn't move laterally to become flooding. And so, if you, if you, the town council and the mayor were to promote textiles and hemp production everywhere in Georgetown, just like it used to be everywhere was tobacco back in the 50s, in people's front yards, backyards, everywhere, there was a little piece of ground, people were raising tobacco. The same could be true of hemp today. And every person then would have an interest in the textile industry. And all that, and then if people say, I wanna raise hemp, or other horticultural crops as well, then they say, well, we need this arable land, and they would resist that it ever be paved. And if it's not paved, then you don't have increased, you'll have no increase in stormwater, and your, your projected increase in stormwater costs would not occur. And, and one other, you, one other, let's see, I've mentioned textiles, I mentioned stormwater, I mentioned arable land, and the fourth item I mentioned here was motor traffic noise. What does motor traffic noise have to do with these other three items?
Tell us in about a minute, Steve, and then tell us in about one minute, and then finish up, please.
Okay. Mayor Prather, you live in the 600 block of South Broadway, right?
Steve, say what you wanna say. I'm not taking your questions.
Well, I know for a fact that you live in the 600 block of South Broadway, because I walk past your house every time, three or four times a week at least. I grew up in the 600 block of South Broadway, just a few doors down. You, you grew up a few doors up. So, we're both from the 600 block of South Broadway. The traffic, the motor traffic noise on South Broadway is becoming unbearable, in my opinion. And since you live there, Mayor Prather, you, you don't seem to wanna comment, but I'll just, I would presume that it's, it's a nuisance to you. If you don't wanna, if I'm wrong, I, I would think it is. And I have friends who live in the 500 block of South Broadway who used to raise a garden, but they tell me, I'm not gonna raise a garden anymore. I can't stand the noise. And.
All right, Steve, you're out, you're out of time now.
If you wanna mitigate this motor traffic noise, go into textiles, and a person who's making textiles will go home and make a blanket instead of going home and working on a car and then driving that car, adding to the motor traffic problem.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's everyone that had signed up for public comment. Oh, do we have a later arrival, Chief? Yes, sir. Please come forward. You may.
Thank you very much. I apologize for not being here in time and manner this time of year. As you probably know, business taxes are coming due, and my CP's still wa, still waiting for me to get back to him, but I thought this was important enough to interrupt my CPA to address the council. As I read in the news graphic, you are dealing with financial shortages. About a decade ago, I approached the council, the very same proposal.
Sorry, would you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. My name's Andrew Whittington. If I understand correctly, the, one of the main purposes or causes for the shortage of income or finances for the city is growth. And Georgetown is one of the most prolific cities in the state. And there was a very similar situation that I commented on in an article of news graphic about a decade ago, very same. Town went from, didn't exist at all, absolute cow pasture, to today, it's over 20,000 people in, well, it's just happened in 20 years. They couldn't afford, the county couldn't afford to build that city, but what they did decide to do was implement an impact fee on new building permits. Now, that is not something that's pro, that's anti-growth, it's pro-growth, because who's actually paying for the increase in staff or whatever's needed for the infrastructure? You are. Your parents are. Your grandparents are. They're not buying new homes, but their taxes are going up. The people that are actually buying the new homes, they're the ones that are actually causing the need for more infrastructure by putting a small impact fee. I'm just gonna say roughly, if I remember correctly, I said $1,000 impact fee per building permit. That equates a 30-year loan of $150,000 to a 10 cents a day. That 10 cents a day, though, to the mortgage owner is nil in comparison to, if I did a That 10 cents a day to the mortgage owner is nil in comparison to, if I did a statistic reading just a little while ago, I looked to see how many homes were being built in, in Georgetown. I think there was 457 open building permits. You know, that's just what I saw now. If this would have been done a decade ago, $1,000, if you just even use the 457 that I saw, that's $457,000 that would have gone into the coffers. Do it over a decade, that would have resolved your problems. I appreciate your time. I really wish George Lesby, y'all know George very well, George Lesby was a politician. He was a forward-thinking politician. A lot of people scoffed at George when he cited that, you know, a reservoir for Scott County water would be a great idea. A lot of people were against it, as you all know. I hear it's coming back around, maybe considering that once again because of the growth of Scott County. Politicians, a true definition is a forward thinker. I ask you all to think forward. Don't let your grandparents, or your parents, or even yourself have to pay for increased growth. Let the growth pay for itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just in response, just to let you know that council is very interested in impact fees or development fees and have asked to study some of the data. And we've asked for, there was a period of time when, when we were told in Kentucky that impact fees were not legal. We think that's been, we think that's not the case, so. But we appreciate, we appreciate your interest in something that the council shares.
Yes.
Anyone else? Next on the agenda, Jack, we're going to get through this pretty quickly, and we'll get to, get to your folks under, under mayor's comments. First, to remind you once again that Census Day, Census kickoff is April the 1st. Hopefully, your census packets will arrive about that time. And if all of us could just promote awareness and importance of the census. Couple of dates to make you all aware of that if, if you're free to join us. We will have Main Street Clean Sweep on April the 22nd. We've done this for the five last years where city hall staff and most of our directors take the lunchtime and an hour or two in the afternoon to clean up downtown.
What was the date on that?
The 22nd, 4/22. That is organized by our, our partner, Bluegrass Green Source. That's a part of our stormwater permit activity. So for anyone that's interested in litter, litter abatement, we would invite you on the 22nd of April. That happens to be Earth Day, though. On Earth Day, we'll clean up downtown Georgetown.
Is there a time or a meeting location, Mayor?
Right here in the council chamber, it's at about 11:30. I think that's right. I'll have Arlene get you an email on that. We have set the date for the Countywide Super Recycling Day that's held out at Toyota, and the Community Day on that will be May 16th. Really handy for stuff you've been accumulating in the garage that you can't throw in regular trash. This is your day to get rid of really scary stuff. And also, just wanted to acknowledge, if the council's not aware of a really interesting partnership that's being done between Georgetown College and the Georgetown Fire Department. Their, their Department of.
Kinesiology.
Kinesiology, the study of movement. They're actually doing physical evaluations on every one of our firefighters and the way they do certain activities, and giving them suggestions for a way to do it better, differently, and to strengthen themselves, and to do this periodically for us. So it just, what I thought was a fascinating partnership between the college and the fire department. And just to let you all know that some innovative things are going on.
And you do that with, then later with Public Works.
Yeah. Yeah, expand, expand it on out. But that's something that most of folks just wouldn't have heard about, but I think it's a great example of what we do. The printed part of mayor's comments is an executive order appointing Kane Johnston to the local Board of Attestment Appeals.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no questions about Mr. Johnston's appointment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries. Okay, item seven. Jack, Scott United.
Thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to come to City Council. Jack Connor, represent, representing Scott County United, not the chamber, Scott County United today. We're here for a municipal order relating to an expansion of one of our local manufacturing partners. As you know, I've been here a number of times for this, and so, again, it's always excited to be able to present a project to you. We've gone through preliminary approval, but today is final. Required by law to come to you for this municipal order. It's my pleasure to introduce behind me, Mr. Todd Bruno, who is the plant manager at Adient USA LLC. And over to my far left, Don Burgeiner, who is the Director of Operations for Adient. And I will let Todd give a very brief description of the project, and then I will go through your, your process, your proverbial paper process.
Good evening, Mayor Prather, council. Thank you for having me here. I'm a lifelong resident of Scott County, born and raised here, graduated Scott County High School, plant manager at the Georgetown facility. This project is, we've invested $6.5 million capital investment, brought on 42 jobs. It supports the RAV4 business that came out to TMMK in January. We're right in the middle of launch, I think we're day 42. It's going very well. Toyota's doing a fantastic job out there with the RAV launch, so just like to get y'all's approval on the tax incentive.
Thank you. So Jack, you'll lay out the process?
I will.
And what step we're at?
Oh, yes, sir. I will. So y'all have a handout before you. So go down to number two, that's the support letters, which we did. The mayor signed the support letter saying that they would present to you the recommendation on the tax incentive, which is 1%, of the occupational tax for the new jobs only. And this, I'll go back through the processes as we go. That was done last year. We go down to what says Kitfa Board Meeting, Preliminary Approval. That actually happened on May the 30th of 2019. This project, by the way, has moved faster than any project I've been, been engaged with, whether through KBI or through what was formerly called KITA. Today, we're talking about the local support resolutions ordinances. This is a municipal order that, that City Attorney Golden has presented for you. We will then take that to final approval. Final approval should be on the 4th Thursday of April before Kitfa, Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority. You'll see that it says final authority, final approval. And then the last step for them, for Adient, to receive their incentives, they have to go through what is called activation. You'll notice in the, in the verbiage there, that could take up to two years. I'm guessing it probably won't in this particular case, but I know of some projects we've had from preliminary approval to final can be a couple of years. That takes time to hire and do your construction, and then between that and final could be another year or two. It's just, but this is, this is moving very, very quickly. So with that, I would like to just add again, three priorities for this community in terms of economic development. Retention, expansion, and location. This, again, is a prime, prime example of a company initially here with, under the name John's Controls, then HVAC Systems, then John's Controls FOMC, and now Adient itself that does the seeding. Perfect example of continual expansion, which is exactly what is part of those three priorities. So I'd be more than happy to address any questions, and I'm sure Todd would be able to.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes, sir.
All of this is in effort of a municipal order approving the granting of local inducements to Adient, the process you've been through, I think, on numerous occasions.
You see the motion, Mayor?
You have a copy of the resolution. We can read it all, or if you'd like to make a motion, that'd be helpful.
We've never read resolutions before.
No.
Motion.
Municipal order.
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. And second, Ms. Ames. And if there are no questions of the applicant or of Jack, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, thank you so very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Look forward to a good project. Under City Attorney, three items, first and second reading, the amendment creating the IRS regulations rolling conformity. We've discussed this at the Revenue Commission. Scott County Fiscal Court is undertaking the same rolling conformity ordinance. So are you going to do, will you read the summary?
I will. An ordinance amending Chapter 17, Article 2 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to provide for rolling conformity with the Internal Revenue Code. Summary, amend Section 17-16 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances regarding occupational license taxes to define internal revenue code to mean the version of the code that exists as of December 31st of the year in which taxes are due. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read the first time February 24th, 2020. Publicly read the second time, March 9th, 2020.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second, Mayor.
And second. Are there any questions at all? And if not, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Ms. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Sams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B on your agenda is a resolution in support of House Bill 484. The purpose of House Bill 484 is to separate the county employee retirement system, CERS, from the Kentucky Employees Retirement System to be self-governed. It's been a goal of Kentucky League of Cities and the Kentucky Association of Counties for quite some time. Yeah, this handout, kind of free CERS. What has really bothered, I think, local government representatives is, under the current retirement system structure, there are 17 board positions. Seven of those are held by CERS members. So we have about one-third of the representation on the board, yet CERS is responsible for three-fourths of the assets in the plan. It's because cities and counties have always, by law, paid our actuarial required contribution. State government did not for lots of years. So the CERS program is significantly better funded than the Kentucky retirement system. And given that discrepancy of resources and representation on the board, the local government has long sought to manage their own county employees retirement system. So that legislation is before the General Assembly now. A lot of cities and counties are passing resolutions in support. In fact, I think this was being heard first in the House, and I believe it appeared before a House Subcommittee today. I didn't get a late update on what the committee meeting did.
They passed it through. The committee did.
So it came out of committee?
Right.
Okay. So our resolution is timely.
I think it was, I think you said the 17-member board. I think it's six, six members are, are CERS and 76. It's all in the resolution, but 76% of the funding is through CERS, so it's disproportionate representation. And the new model would create a separate nine-member board for, just for CERS.
Mayor, quick question. I probably ought to know the answer to this, but assuming this, I mean, is there any chance of this even happening?
It's gotten further this year than it did last year.
Yeah.
And the year before.
And then if it did happen hypothetically, then would it have an impact on the pension allocation that we've kind of been studying here recently?
Potentially. I don't think there's any guarantees associated with it, David.
Definitely stopped bleeding to some extent.
Yeah.
They might be able to make decisions that were more aware of local government, but I don't have an assurance of that.
Yeah, sorry. You need a motion? I'll give you a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it for you, Mayor.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to, to support free CERS. Not free, but let's let it loose.
Leave them up.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then item C is a municipal order approving a filing of a condemnation petition. This particular condemnation petition has to do with the South Sewer Line project. The engineers have been working for several months trying to acquire all of the easements, and they've had really good success. We have two or three property owners that we have not yet settled with. In this particular case, this property owner has never been responsive to us. We have mailed, we have certified mail, we have done all of the notifications that we can. The property owner who aired the property from her deceased parent has chosen not to communicate with us. And we're at the stage where we need to move forward with the South Sewer Line. Kind of surprised that this is the first one of these that has come to us. We're very late in this right-of-way acquisition. I thought we would have hit this stage earlier. There may be one other that will require condemnation action. For any new council member, the way condemnation of this type works is if the council votes to file the petition, then we send three appraisers out to do what's called a windshield appraisal of the property. They don't, they don't get in the courthouse, and they don't go in the property, but they do a windshield appraisal. Those three appraisers then get together with their numbers, and we take the average of the three numbers. We deposit that much money into an account for the owner. So we actually make our disbursement, and the owner can leave it in the account or take it. And they still have the right to go to court to argue with us over the value. The important thing is the, the water company and the project gets immediate access to the property so that we can go on with the project.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Chase some questions about it because I am not a believer in condemnation. But when I read, when I read the municipal order, it sounded like you were going into someone's property and taking someone's house or property, that type of thing. But Chase showed me that he was taking a street, going through a right, actually more, what I'm looking at, it's more of a right-of-way into a street area, not, you're not bothering their home or decreasing the value of their home if they can sell their home later and that type of thing. Is that correct?
In fact, in fact, we think, we think you can make a really strong case that in, in every instance, we're increasing the value of people's property by having sewer go across it. We're not damaging their house.
Yeah, that was the question that I was, when you say condemnation, you think you're taking their property, taking their home, taking that, but you're not doing that in this case.
This is just a tool, as the mayor said, for us to get access to the property, keep the, the project moving along. There will be compensation to the property owner. This is simply for an easement. This isn't property taking of any kind.
Right.
You need a motion, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion.
Thank you. And is there a second? Thank you. Any questions for Chase on that kind of mission? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Under City Engineer, we have Mr. Hightower with us tonight. First is a contract amendment with HDR Engineering for the Lanes Run Business Park. And this is necessitated by another transaction that Jack's working on.
Yeah.
So it's a surveying cost to be ready.
Yeah, they've sold one of the, one of the lots out there, and they have to get the plat straightened out for it, so.
So is there a motion for that? Thank you.
Second.
And second. Thank you, Todd. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Eddie has brought you a contract for the corrective work on Maddox Street. We knew that that would make a bunch of council members happy.
Yeah, that's.
Ed, you need to describe that project.
Uh, yeah, there's the, Maddox Street is down by the railroad tracks, right off East Main Street, and it's been prone to flooding for a long time. We think it's from a spring that surfaces under the railroad tracks and just travels across the road. It's really bad in the winter with the ice and everything, and so we're going to put in some storm infrastructure to, to carry that underground and get that off the street, so make it better for those people over there.
Good.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And then the municipal order approving the CNR asphalt contract for the Walmart Right-In, Right-Out. To the point of actually approving a contract.
I'd make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay.
Thought David would do that.
We hope somebody else jumps aboard with us, too, Gary.
Well, we hope somebody else jumps aboard with us, too, Gary.
Uh, it's an important project.
Yes.
If there's any questions, we'll take them. If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this particular vote as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you. Item 10 on your agenda, under Police Department, is a municipal order approving the purchase of ammunition.
They gotta have bullets.
They gotta have bullets.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I'm glad you did.
I'll second it.
And you'll say, "Uh, Chief, I noticed that some of that ammunition is only available for police departments to buy."
Yep.
The good stuff, I guess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, let me run back under Mayor's comments. I was kind of in
a hurry to, to get to Jack and his economic development clients. That, that I kind of cut myself short a little bit. Uh, to give the council an update on, uh, our meetings of the last week, where we met with each of the committees to go over the, uh, financial analysis and, uh, kind of some of the numbers we had run. Uh, as we indicated, we would start on, on Monday with the Finance Committee. Uh, we met with the Police Committee on Tuesday, and then, uh, Public Works Fire Committee on Thursday. And then we circled back to the Finance Committee on Friday, uh, afternoon. A couple of things that we, we specifically learned during the week. Uh, Andrew had spent some time with the Revenue Commission staff and, uh, talking through, uh, potential timelines. Uh, I, I've made it clear that if we can come to a consensus, I would hope that we can take action to be effective by our July 1st budget. That's not etched in stone, but it, it's simply a goal. Uh, for, for that to be a reasonable goal, we need to give employers two months head time. So, they can make changes for their business software, or withholding, or other provisions that they have to make. Uh, that takes two months out of our timeline. Uh, anything that we would, we would anticipate completing and actually acting on would have to be done by the end of April. I, I do not have a recommendation for the council tonight. Uh, in our committee meetings, we have discussed one scenario. That's the only one that, uh, when we were asked to answer the question for the council, what does it take to solve these deficiencies? And what does that, what does that cost? And what are the revenue options? Uh, we have given our best estimate of what we think remedying this situation cost. Uh, each council member has received, and, and the news graphic has done a good job of reporting what the various revenue options are. Uh, I do not have a recommendation for you tonight to discuss a specific recommendation. I would hope that by the, it is my expectation, by the next time the council meets, uh, we will have a recommendation. We can discuss that. That would give the council the time during the month of April to, uh, consider an ordinance, consider two readings, even consider a public hearing during that time. So, that is my report for tonight. Be glad to answer any questions there might be.
Mayor, I don't want to have any questions, but I appreciate you and, and Stacy and Andrew, everybody that's been involved. And I know it's been a laborious process, but this past week was a good week getting with all the, the different committees. And I think, I know you took the extra time. You came back to the Finance Committee, and that was, that was, again, helpful for us. It seems like every time we meet, it's, you know, even though we've been through a lot, it's just, it's helpful. And I think it's improved our, our outlook and our position on, on trying to help resolve this issue. So, uh, at least from the Finance Committee's perspective, our goal is to try to, try to help with that, help come to conclusion here in the next week or, or so. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for the efforts. And I know I've done that before, but it's, it's monumental. There's a lot going into it. There's moving parts. And I know for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. I mean, there's just a lot of things to, to take into consideration. So, we will, we will get through it. We will get through it, and we'll be better because of it.
Good.
I agree.
Uh, so I kind of left that out of my mayor's report, but it's fairly important that I, that I closed that loop, at least for this meeting. Uh, and that brings us down to council comments. Uh, Todd, could we start with you?
Sure. Uh, this Saturday, uh, the 14th, at 1:00 PM, Tammy and I have been asked to speak at a, uh, Boston Community Conversation, uh, at the Perfecting Praise Church, 318 Chambers Avenue. Uh, so I want to invite everyone out if they want, wish to, you know, ask any questions or whatever, you know, uh, they, uh, ask Tammy and I, and looking forward to it.
Can we come and ask you and Tammy questions?
Sure. Come on. I don't know if we'll give a good answer or the right answer, but we'll give eight answers.
We'll defer to the mayor to answer that question.
Uh, this Saturday at 1:00 PM. And then the only other thing is echo what we heard a lot of over the past few days. Uh, Coach Glenn and, uh, Scott County Basketball Team did a great job, and, uh, look forward to seeing them go deep into the state tournament next week, so.
Wasn't that storybook?
It was.
It was.
Considering, considering what they went through for the year and they come out and win it.
Yeah.
You get there, yes.
Thanks, Todd. Martin?
No, sir, I'm fine.
David?
Mayor, I know you were, uh, they had the legislative breakfast, uh, Saturday morning. I know you were there, and several of the council members were there. And, uh, you know, I guess it's, it's interesting to hear from, um, our legislatures, some of the issues they're dealing with. It's probably not all, um, so similar to our situation. But the one, the one question I did ask about was pretty clear that we're not gonna get any relief from the MAP, regarding the MAP funds and the shortage that we have regarding the gas tax and trying to pave our streets. But, uh, anyway, again, appreciate you being there, and the rest of us.
Yeah. David now texted after, after that meeting was over. I thanked him for asking the question he asked, and, but concluded, "The Calvary's not coming to help."
Yeah. So, the reality is, as you all know, Karen, you probably dealt with this when you were mayor in regards to the MAP funds. There's, there used to be enough money to pay, to pave all the streets. And so, if, if the formula's not gonna be changed, or if they're not gonna address the issue, then the bottom line is, there's gonna have to be tax revenue come from somewhere. So, if it doesn't come from the state, it's gonna come from the city's general fund to take care of these problems. So, that's, at least that's my, the way I see it. Anyway, I don't think there's any other, any options.
If I remember correctly, it's about, just comparing this year, it's about $200,000 less, maybe?
More than that, from what we're being told. 450, does that sound right?
It is.
Connie, I know you were somewhere in that range. Closer, go ahead, maybe.
Bad news.
One more thing to add to it.
It's, it's, it's a little, it's, it's right on the $500,000 range. Uh, it, when, when I used to work for a not-for-profit that worked for cities, one of our frequent messages to community gatherings was, "No one is coming to help." And that's not supposed to be something that scares people. It's supposed to actually empower people to be aware that no one's coming to help. The Calvary's not coming. So, but we have it within our own ability to, to control our situation. So, uh, I think that's a real, real strong message.
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, they said specifically, "That is our responsibility." So, we have to give it. And we will.
Anything else, David?
Yes.
Connie?
No, I just, uh, wanna piggyback on what David says. I appreciate all of the information and the meetings and just a lot to sort through and decipher through. But, again, like David says, we will get through it. We all will work together to come up with something for our community.
Sounds good.
A couple of points of research, if I can ask for them. One is, uh, on the ordinance of the Pigs in Louisville. See what, if we can get the ordinance, a copy of that section with deals with the pigs, that's what it says. And then the other is something that the judge said today in his State of the County address about the salaries and what they did for the salaries. I'd like to have a copy or something of what the original salaries were, how much they increased their salaries, if possible. Get that from the county. And that, that is it, Mayor.
That's it. Thank you. Martin?
Good.
Tammy?
Good.
You're good. If there's nothing else to come for the council, we will stand adjourned.
No, it was mine. It was down in my briefcase. I didn't think it'd make that much noise. Yes, you can. It's, but it's got notes all over it. Let me see here.